I'd like to call a meeting to order. Jennifer, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there's a revised agenda at your desk for adoption.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
Motion second to adopt the agenda, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Need approval of the April 25, 2013 minutes? Or any additions or corrections?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Baker, you want to speak?
No, excuse me.
Okay. Any other councilmen in the audience? Okay. Items to be withdrawn or deferred?
We have one item to be deferred indefinitely. This is item three, 2013 SP dash 009 dash 001 Cahal Corners. Request to rezone from R6 to SPMR zoning for properties located at 1621 and 1623 Cahal Avenue and for a portion of a property located at 1629 Cahal Avenue to permit up to 10 residential units. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely.
Okay. Motion to defer indefinitely, item number three. Motion second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Items on consent.
As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. For items on consent, a notice to the public, the items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. On our consent agenda today, the first item is 2A, 2013 CP dash 007 dash 002 West Nashville Community Plan Amendment. This is a request to amend the West Nashville Community Plan 2009 update by changing the community character policy from T3 suburban open space to T3 suburban community center policy for a portion of the property located at 6734 Charlotte Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 2B, 2013 SP dash 019 dash 001, 6734 Charlotte Pike. A request to rezone from R6 to SPO zoning for a portion of the property located at 6734 Charlotte Pike to permit an office development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions if the associated plan amendment is approved and disapprove without all conditions, or to disapprove preliminary SP if the plan amendment is not approved. Item number four.
We've had a request to pull in.
Item number five, 2013 Z dash 014 PR dash 001. This is a request to rezone from SP to MUGA zoning for properties located at 1204 and 1206 Brick Church Pike and at 40 Evergreen Avenue. The staff recommendation is to approve. Item six, 2013 Z dash 015 PR dash 001. This is a request to rezone from R6 to OR20 zoning for property located at 602 33rd Avenue North. The staff recommendation is to approve OR20 and to direct the staff to prepare a policy amendment to support limited office and multifamily residential uses. Item seven, 2008 S dash 027 G dash 06 Beautiful Valley Place. A request for a concept plan approval to create 13 cluster lots on properties located at 7972 McCrory Lane and Beautiful Valley Drive, zoned RS10. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item eight, 2013 S dash 060 dash 001 Connor's Two Lot Subdivision. This is a request for a final plat approval to create two lots on property located at 6323 East Valley Road, zoned RS80. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item nine, 2013 S dash 066 dash 001 HG Hill Center Dickerson Pike, re-subdivision of Lot 1. A request for final plat approval to create four lots on property located at Hillside Road, unnumbered, zoned RS10. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. And under other business, item 10, new employee contracts for Andrew Collins and Brenda Diaz. Item 11, contract amendment number one between the Nashville Davidson County Metropolitan Planning Commission on behalf of the Nashville Area MPO and Gresham Smith &amp; Partners for professional services related to the conduct of the Southeast Area Transportation and Land Use Study. And finally, item number 12, to set a public hearing date for amendments to Section 6.1 of the subdivision regulations, improvements and performance bond, on June 13, 2013, or if notices cannot be completed at least 30 days prior to June 13, 2013, then June 27, 2013.
Okay. The items to be requested to be on consent are items 2A and B, item 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. Motion second to approve those on consent, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Those are now approved. So for the audience, we'll be hearing items 1A and 1B and item number four. Phil Ponder, if you would, why don't you take item 1A and 1B on the chair if you would?
These are for public hearing, please.
All right. Anita, would you give us a report on 1A and go from there?
Sure, thank you. Okay. This first item is a request for a plan amendment to the West Nashville Community Plan. The property is located along 46th Avenue North in the Sylvan Park neighborhood. That's seven blocks south of Charlotte and two blocks north of the neighborhood center at 46th and Murphy. The property is a little over half an acre, 0.54 acres, and we have an accompanying zone change request with this plan amendment request. The property currently contains an older home and a commercial building, I'm sorry, an older commercial building and a dilapidated house. It's surrounded by single-family houses, and the applicant would like to build three single-family homes and a small-scale neighborhood commercial building. As you see here, this shows the property from the intersection at Utah and 46th Avenues. This is looking north from the property along 46th Avenue, and this is looking south. The current policy is urban neighborhood maintenance. And the proposed policy is urban neighborhood center, which we apply to pedestrian-friendly areas generally located at intersections, and uses, of course, include mixed-use, commercial, residential, and civic uses, and the centers usually serve people within a five-minute walk. The staff recommendation is to approve this policy amendment, and now Greg will discuss the zone change in more detail.
Commissioners, this is the 46th and Utah SP. This is the zone change part of the application. The request is for a zone change from RS 7.5 and CN, or Commercial Neighborhood, to a mixed-use SP. Site is at the corner of 46th Avenue North and Utah Avenue in Sylvan Park. Staff recommendation is approve with conditions with approval of the plan amendment request that Anita has just presented. The zoning again is RS 7.5 and Commercial Neighborhood, and RS 7.5 is a single-family-only zoning district with a minimum 7, 7,500 square-foot lot, and CN is a Commercial zoning district that permits small-scaled commercial uses. And just to go through a little bit of the existing conditions again, this basically shows the existing conditions on the site. The commercial building on the CN-zone property is about 3,000 square feet. However, if constructed today, the CN zoning would only allow about a 2,300 square-foot commercial building, and there is one residential dwelling on the residential part of the site. Here's a photo showing the 46th Avenue street frontage, and you can see the parking layout. It's all 90-degree head-in parking from 46th Avenue. At the front of the commercial building, the parking is organized where it basically requires cars parked along, in front of that store, to back out into the 46th Avenue street in order to exit, and that, this parking layout, you know, wouldn't be permitted with new construction today. And as Anita discussed, the current policy is neighborhood maintenance. It's a residential-only policy intending to keep the, intending to maintain the context of the surrounding neighborhood, and the urban neighborhood center would allow for residential and non-residential uses, but all intending to maintain the scale of that neighborhood. And here's a site plan showing the proposal, the SP proposal. 4,900 square-foot commercial building is proposed for the southern half of the site, and that building is divided into two tenant spaces, and you can see the dividing line in the building. The northern tenant space is 1,700 square feet, and the southern space is 3,200 square feet. Permitted uses in these spaces would include restaurant, office, and retail uses. Parking for this commercial building is provided behind the building and is accessed along the alley along the south of the site. Additional parking is provided on, by on-street spaces along 46th Avenue, and this SP does meet the parking requirements of the zoning code. Landscape buffers are provided along the east and north of the commercial site where it would abut residential development. There are three single, on the northern half of the site, there are three single-family detached dwellings. These would face Utah Avenue to the north, which is consistent with the orientation of other houses along that block, along Utah Avenue. The corner lot will have a wraparound port, which is intended to allow that corner building to address both street frontages. The 50-foot lot width for each of those lots would also be consistent with the lot widths for the rest of the, with that half, with that southern half of the block, and with many of the other lots within Sylvan Park. And each dwelling will be served by a driveway connection from Utah to a rear garage. This development also includes the addition of sidewalks along both street frontages and street trees along 46th Avenue, and this sidewalk along 46th Avenue will also complete the sidewalk connection between Charlotte Avenue to the north and to Murphy Road to the south. And there's also outdoor seating proposed if a restaurant space should occupy the southern tenant space. Here's an image of the SP within its surrounding context, and you can see the alley along the south of the site that would serve the parking behind the commercial building, and you can also see the intent to organize the dwellings on the north side of the site to fit the spacing of the residential buildings along Utah Avenue, and also to be consistent in terms of setback from the Utah Avenue street frontages. As stated in the staff report, the development will also meet several critical planning goals. The improvement of the street frontages with sidewalks and with street trees would improve the walkability of the surrounding neighborhood. Small-scale mixed-use development supports a variety of transportation options when it is placed within a residential neighborhood in proximity to residential uses, and this site is also a good example of compact infill development that appropriately incorporates residential and non-residential building design within that existing context of the surrounding neighborhood. And to close, with approval of the plan amendment that was presented by Anita, staff also recommends approval with conditions of the SP and disapproval without all conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Anita. Appreciate the presentations. For the audience, the items 1A and 1B are open for public hearing. They will be heard simultaneously, and just a reminder that you will be limited to a two-minute time span. You will, if you follow the lights on the desk, you will note a warning signal, and then you will hear and see the two-minute item.
An applicant has 10 minutes.
An applicant has 10 minutes. And Councilman Holloman, are you representing the applicant, or are you speaking?
No, I just wanted to say a few things, if it's okay, before the applicant speaks, and I apologize for not speaking at the beginning, but I wanted to be here for the presentation.
Go ahead.
Jason Holloman, councilmember for District 24. I do want to begin by saying that these developers have been very engaged in a community process for some time. I believe they've attended about half a dozen neighborhood association meetings. I've hosted two subsequent community meetings to specifically address concerns of the immediately adjacent neighbors. Because it was described in the staff report, this is now a vacant lot, well, it's really a single-family lot that is a double lot that could be subdivided into two residential lots by right, as well as an existing commercial space, an old grocery store, that has the ability to be torn down and rebuilt at about 3,000 square feet. So essentially, the additional zoning rights request that's coming before you is for an extra residential unit in exchange for those units being smaller and a little more compatible with the existing housing stock than what might otherwise be built if two houses were built. And the real conversation in the community is about the expansion of the commercial footprint, and there are some trade-offs there between improving the pedestrian accessibility, currently parking is in the front, there's not a wide sidewalk, certainly no outdoor seating space, and the aesthetics of the commercial building. The issue that is not fully resolved is the size of the commercial property. I've told the applicant that I think there needs to be further discussion with some of the adjacent neighbors about how best to address that. They have offered some conditions, such as providing additional off-site parking. I will say that this proposed plan complies with what they would be required to do under the UZO if they built under straight zone, but obviously, this close and this much in the middle of mostly residential property, there is some concern about restaurant in particular bleeding over and parking being an issue in the immediately adjacent neighborhood. So I just want to say to the Commission that I do think there's some more conversation to be had on that particular front, but I do think it's something that we can address going forward, and I don't think what you're going to see as the final product before council is going to be any more expansive than what you see here presented, which of course, as drafted, is already recommended for approval by the staff. So I just want to make that note and comment that this has been a good, positive process. We're just still in conversation. Frankly, I've been very impressed with both the neighborhood, the level of dialogue, positive negotiation, as well as the developer's willingness to work with the community and be flexible and try to find the right fit that will be a success for them and a success for the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. The applicant in this case has 10 minutes, if he so desires, and he may, he or she may reserve part of their time for rebuttal, if you desire.
Thank you. My name is Brian Adams. I'm part of the group that owns this property. It's me and my partner, Andy Stone, who unfortunately can't be here this evening. We purchased the property in November of last year, and starting at that time, we consistently met with the Sylvan Park Neighborhood Association, which meets on a monthly basis, and initially, we just had a very wide-open conversation with them, all the members who were present. We brought a whiteboard and said, what are your concerns, and what would you like to see there ideally? And based on those comments, conversations, and obviously, we've been meeting with planning and other folks, we came up with the development that's been submitted today. In addition to that, we've been consistently talking with Jason Holloman, who's been fantastic to work with, and have since progressed in the conversation and put a number of issues and conditions alongside the development. As Jason said, we will continue to have conversations with him during this process, but we've made a lot of progress so far. I think, at this point, we've really come a long way, and I would applaud Sylvan Park Neighborhood Association, especially in terms of being very engaged in the process. We've had office hours at a nearby coffee shop, and we've attempted to get in front of everybody possible by going on Facebook Sylvan Park Neighborhood Association, as well as the Next Door, which is another social media site. We also, a few weeks ago, to make sure that we were engaging everyone in the immediate vicinity of the property, went door-to-door and handed out flyers about one of the extra meetings we had in addition to the community meeting hosted on consecutive Sundays. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. If they're of a technical nature, Joe Butcher, who's our lead architect on the project, is here, and he can give you specific answers.
Thank you.
Thank you. In that case, I'll reserve the rest of my time.
All right. You'll have two minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Is anybody else who would like to speak in favor of this proposal? You would have two minutes. All right. Please come to the microphone. Anybody that wants to speak in favor, please line up behind the microphone. Please identify yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Joseph Mella. I'm a 20-year resident of Sylvan Park and live approximately a block and a half from the proposed project. Ever since I think I was made aware of it, we've been very excited about the prospect of having these kinds of improvements in our neighborhood. I think for some time, that property has been somewhat of a blight. I think when we moved in there 20 years ago, it was a functioning little market with a butcher and kind of the things that you'd like to see in a market. That has changed over time, and I think, especially with the increased interest in having a walkable, friendly kind of neighborhood, I think the types of proposals that they're putting forward on this property development is something really exciting for us, myself, my wife, and family. And I think really, I have to admit too, I think the developers have made every effort to engage the community on really all fronts, to allow discussion and allow interchange, and I think, you know, from my perspective, it's a model of how you kind of move forward with a development project, and I just wholeheartedly agree that this would be a great improvement to our neighborhood and the quality of life in Sylvan Park. Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Caroline Trost, and I live at 4310 Dakota Avenue, and I think it's about five blocks away from the development. I am not directly in an area that would be affected by the parking concerns, but I do walk by there almost every day, and as it is right now, it's a horrible eyesore, and it's sort of dangerous, the way the park was dangerous up until the place closed. I've seen the development, the proposed plans, I think they look great. I'm really excited about having a bakery and a restaurant in walking distance. I think that the parking concerns could be alleviated, and I don't know if anybody's discussed this, but I know that on Murphy Road, there are bike lanes there too, but parking is allowed after 6:00 PM when presumably there are fewer bikes, and I don't see any reason why part of 46th couldn't also ultimately have a plan similar to that to allow parking in what's now bike lanes in the evening hours that would lessen concerns about parking on the side streets. But I just wanted to voice my strong approval and my approval of the, you know what I'm trying to say. I recommend it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Tricia Hurstfeld. I live at 4710 Dakota, so within walking distance, but not immediately within the development, the proposed development kind of footprint. My family is definitely in favor of this development. I walk with my kids to all the restaurants down at 46th and there on Murphy all the time. We walk back and forth to the ballpark and various other places, and we think it would be lovely to be able to walk to another restaurant and a bakery. And I agree with what the previous speaker said, that the way it was up until this business closed, it was actually quite dangerous. People kind of coming in and out, and you had to actually pull into the road, and you couldn't really see anybody when people were pulling in or out. So I think it'll be a lovely addition, and I know a lot of my neighbors agree. I've been pretty involved in this process from the beginning. I have to say that the developers have done a fantastic job with really reaching out to people, coming to all the community meetings, emails, trying to follow up on any concerns that people might have. They've even gone so far as to, you know, work out a shared parking agreement, where, you know, potentially there could be parking at an off-site location. There's a couple different church parking lots and various other things. So I think they've done a fantastic job with that, and we're fully in support of the project. Thank you.
Next.
My name's Trey Tally. I'm at 4607 Utah Avenue. I'm three doors down from the building, and I'm very excited about the project. I'm not really going to break a whole lot of new ground, other than to say, I walk by there multiple times a week. It is one of the more awkward sidewalks right now. I'm very excited about that improvement, very excited about being able to walk a block to a bakery in the neighborhood. That's a new addition. I think cleaning up, adding the three houses just blends into the rest of the street. It's been great to see the developers' response to the rest of the community. I've heard, I hadn't heard about as many meetings as Jason mentioned, but I'd heard about quite a few, and when I went to attend one of them, they patiently answered all of our questions, listened to concerns, and talked about the ways along the way that they had made adjustments to their plan to address concerns, and I'm glad to hear that that process is ongoing. But my wife and my family would be excited for the project and hope it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Kraft Hayes. I'm at 4302 Elkins. I run by that property a couple times a week. I guess to reiterate, I think that the developers have done a fantastic job communicating what they want to accomplish and then understanding concerns. They were, I was at the first Sylvan Park Association meeting where they were there, and there was overwhelming support for it, to the point that I didn't think there would be any disapproval of it along the way. As there were any concerns that came up, the developers did a fantastic job of understanding them and addressing them, and I think that that's been made very public through multiple lines of media. I do believe that this building, especially the commercial space, would relieve some pent-up need for commercial space in the area. I think everybody's voice, they would love to have a bakery, love to have a restaurant to be able to walk to, and they providing a great sidewalk to be able to get there. So as a resident, I think it's a great addition to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Anybody else speaking in favor? If not, anybody that would express their concerns about the proposal? If you come to the microphone, please.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is John Howden. I live at 4412 Utah. That's the corner of 45th and Utah, just a block away from the site. I just wanted to say, ask you here today to respectfully, or I'm asking that you respectfully or respectfully request that the Planning Commission either disapprove or defer the rezoning as proposed. As proposed, the SP application document itself currently involves a number of false statements, incorrect quantities, and missing information, as basic as what is allowed under the current zoning. So the false statements in particular have led to confusion about the proposed rezoning in the neighborhood. There are really two parts to the proposed rezoning. There's the residential and commercial, as Jason mentioned, Jason Holloman. Everyone does seem comfortable subdividing the two residential lots into three and orienting them to Utah, but do note that it is reducing the minimum required lot size in half, which does raise some concerns about setting future precedents in the neighborhood. The primary concern is the proposed expansion of the commercial uses. Everyone understands that under the existing zoning, parking and traffic will be an issue in the future. The basic question then is, why are we talking about expanding it by 65% or another 2,000 square feet? In fact, the existing structure is a non-conforming structure, which is 600 square feet more than it is allowed under the base zoning today. So in effect, the applicant is really asking to more than double the allowable square footage from 2,300 square feet to 4,900 square feet. As the saying goes, density is great if it's accompanied by the appropriate infrastructure, including parking. The recent opposition to this, to the rezoning stems from several neighborhoods, several neighbors going door-to-door, asking everyone to attend a meeting at McCabe. During the course of that meeting, it became apparent that the 75-seat restaurant and bakery presented to the neighborhood could really accommodate 120, 130 seats, plus outdoor seating of 26, and the bakery is really just a prospective tenant, and the requested use is a takeout restaurant, which would add another 20 seats. So respectfully request that you either disapprove or defer it indefinitely until we resolve the issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
My name is Mike Irwin. I live right across the street at 4506 Utah Avenue. I think there was a lot, there was a lot of initial support for this development until we heard word about the restaurant. That's where the concerns about parking and noise really came in. If you live three or four blocks away- live three or four blocks away, that's another issue. If you live right there, it affects your daily life and your daily quality of life for you and your children. Having said that, we support development of the site. The restaurant with the parking and noise is the primary area of concern. It's the residential area and not a commercial area. The town center or commercial area is several blocks away at 46th and Murphy Road. We've been working with the developers with a number of contingency or contingencies that we can put under the plan, and they have been very good to work with. One of the things, the adoption of limitations on the size of the restaurant, we wanted to see it seating no more than 75 people at any given time, operating hours, all of which they have verbally agreed to, or at least in most part, Brian, I believe I'm speaking correctly. Operating hours for the restaurant to be limited between 10:00 and 6:00 AM, or no restaurant activity between 10:00 and 6:00 AM. The space lineup for the bakery now, which could turn into a takeout restaurant at some point, could only be open from 7:00, or excuse me, no activity between 7:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Parking needs to be addressed. I think there was inadequate parking for that. Soundproofing of HVAC equipment, which we've already agreed with the developers on, and the maximum noise levels per the zoning code of 60 levels. So if we limit the size of the restaurant, I think you'd see a lot more support from the nearby neighbors. Once again, it's very easy to support when you live five, 10, 15 blocks away. When you live right there and you have kids playing in the street with the added traffic, the parking, people coming out of the restaurant at all hours of the evening, it's definitely an area of concern. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Carlos Vanoye. I'm 4402 Utah, two blocks from this development. I'm okay with the housing. I'm very excited about the bakery. My concern is the restaurant, the space of it, and what the overflow parking that may bring to the neighborhood. We already have restaurants within two blocks from, I'm sorry, restaurants on Murphy Road, where the parking overflows two blocks away from the restaurants. And talking about safety, on those streets, cars park on both sides of the streets, makes it very narrow to drive through, and very difficult and dangerous to walk, especially at night. That's my only concern about parking. If we could limit the size of the restaurant to a much more particular 75-seating, I will be okay with it. But right now, my concern about is parking and overflow and the potential danger to driving through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Annie Selick Bergerson. I live at 4504 Utah Avenue, directly across from this proposed development. It's, I've lived there since 1999. I've enjoyed the spaciousness of the lot. I'm concerned about crowding and rezoning that would set a future precedent in the neighborhood. I currently park in front of my house. I do not have a driveway off of Utah Avenue, and so I'm concerned about this becoming a busy commercial area that I'll have parking in front of my house and on my street. I am in favor of some development, maybe not quite at the proportions that are being proposed. The alley behind the property where people would turn into the parking lot that they've planned, is, it says it's a two-way alley, but with the trashcans and everything, it's actually kind of a one-way alley. So I'm concerned about that, and for my neighbors who are going to be dealing with that. Yeah, parking, crowded, those are my concerns, but I'm not against development in general, some sort of development and improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Don Harper. I live at 4505 Utah. I live in the house right next door to both of the developments. My brother built that house a couple years ago. He passed away in February, so I'm now living there in the house. Our family owns this house. We've owned it for some time. So there's two things going on here. We have the beautiful open space with the big sycamores and oak trees. They want to put three houses there. So for whoever lives in my house, they're going to immediately lose the sunsets. All the open space, it's just going to be a big wall of china with two-and-a-half-story houses, three of them stacked up in front of us. Now, the original zoning calls for the other direction. Possibly, if the houses were two, as required by the current code, there would at least be an avenue to look through to see the sun. But now, it's just going to be a big wall of houses to look through. So that's one concern. Personally, I love the open space. How it's survived all these years, I don't know. I'm still looking into that. Those trees are gorgeous, so I'm going to really miss that. The squirrels, the birds, the incredible oak tree that's there, that's going to be a great loss. You know, open space is a precious resource. So this is something that's a jewel that we have in Sylvan Park. We're going to lose it, going to lose it to some more houses. So I regret that. I'm going to miss that. I'm going to mourn its loss. It's a terrible thing we're losing. So the restaurant, why do we need a restaurant? I can see the bakery. It's great. Why do we need more? What's the idea? Why do we need to make so much money out of this piece of land? Why can't it be a bookstore, a tea shop, a grocery store? Why a restaurant? Why do we need more traffic and cars and busyness when right now, we have amazing tranquility? I sit on my back porch at night, and the stars are incredible, and the birds that come still in the dusk, and in the early morning hours too. So we're going to lose all of that. So whoever lives in that house will lose it. So I regret it. I oppose it, and I hope it doesn't happen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mikhail Houghton. I live at 4412 Utah Avenue. On April 28th, we attended the community meeting at McCabe Pub. At that time, the concern was raised that a restaurant of 3,200 square feet seemed large for a 75-person restaurant. 75-person restaurant is how the developers have pitched this to the neighborhood on the list serve in the community meetings at the Neighborhood Association meetings. So it wasn't until we went home and crunched some numbers, and we realized the seating capacity of a 3,200-square-foot restaurant is, you know, in the neighborhood of 150 people. It's larger than McCabe Pub, which has 60 parking spaces. And we thought that if we didn't know that, maybe we should walk around and talk to the neighbors and see if they realized that. So what you received is me going door-to-door just since this Monday night, talking with the neighbors about the development, asking, you know, you've heard that it's a 75-person restaurant. A 75-person restaurant is less than 2,000 square feet. I know this because I spent last week calling restaurants. The Fire Flag Grill is 2,000 square feet, seats 90 people. The Yellow Porch, 2,000 square feet, seats 90 people. McCabe Pub, about 2,800 square feet, seats 130 people, not counting the outdoor seats. So we walked around the neighborhood, mostly me, and when people did open their door, they signed this petition. The last page is a map that maps the houses we went to. I'm going to, so, thank you. I hope that you disapprove of this.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Pat Bergerson. I live at 4504 Utah Avenue, directly across the street from the proposed development. I am in approval of some things with regards to this development, but I do disapprove of trying to cram so much into a small space. Just by looking at this, I know, I can tell from where I live, we live right across the street, and we have no driveway. I can see that there's going to be, there's going to be a lot of overflow into the front of our house with parking. That's going to be an issue. But also, just to actually have to look at those three skinny little houses jammed in on that lot. I would, I don't approve of the three houses. I would more approve of two houses. It just makes more sense to me. The restaurant, the size of the restaurant, it just seems like with the size of the restaurant and how much parking there is, it's just going to be too much spillover. And basically, I just think there's too many things crammed in on that lot. And so that's it. I disapprove of the three houses. I'd like to see two houses going in there. It seems more of a reasonable condition for the development. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? The applicant has two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you all for the time this evening. I think there's been a lot of comments made. I would just say that we met with Jason yesterday, and we will continue to have discussions with him, as well as the neighborhood, planning, everyone who's involved in this, to make sure that all these issues that have been raised are addressed through conditions or other various mechanisms. Thank you.
All right, we thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
Move opposed to the public hearing.
Has a motion, and it's seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and the public hearing is closed. Let's begin our discussion with Councilman Gregg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I would like to thank all the neighbors for taking the time to come down here and spending your late afternoon with us, talking about zoning. And so I guess I have a few questions, just to make sure that I'm clear in my mind, because there were some arguments saying about different numbers. So if the staff, Greg, could you tell us what the current zoning of, first, the commercial lot is, and by right, if they tore down the building, what they could currently build?
They have, the current zoning for commercial is CN. If there were nothing on the site right now, the CN zoning would allow for a 2,300 approximately square-foot commercial building, based on the floor area ratio permitted by the CN zoning. But because there is an existing building there of 3,000 square feet, that's, you know, basically, they have a legal non-conforming use on that site, and that's, you know, what they're permitted to use right now.
And let me ask you this. Could they, what would they be, under the, say they just, would they be permitted to remodel the 3,000-foot square foot?
Yes.
Square foot building? Okay. And then what about by right, the residential property? What is the current zoning, and what could they do by right right now?
The current zoning is RS 7.5. It's, this is getting into the weeds a little bit, but it was originally platted as two lots. And I can go to, I can show you the map of this. This shows the original plat. There are three lots facing 46th Avenue, and right now, lots one and two have been consolidated since the original plat. But they could go back and reestablish those original lots, one and two, and they could place a single-family detached dwelling on each of those.
Okay. Well, thank you, Greg. I appreciate that. I think that it's important to get a clear picture of what, you know, you can do by right, and get those facts straight. I don't want anybody to be misled, and I think that's pretty clear, and I appreciate you pointing those out. You know, it is sometimes hard to develop in residential neighborhoods, but in good planning, I think strong, good developments can create a lot of energy. And I have to say that I think that the biggest problem, if I was a neighbor or concerned with the planning, is the parking. That is a problem. But I think the development, though, fixes a dangerous parking situation. I think that it supports transit and walkability because of the new sidewalks, which is what you want for a neighborhood, strong neighborhood development like this. I've been on record on density. I do support increasing density, and that is something that I think this city doesn't do a good enough job with. We talk about that almost every meeting that we have. So I'm glad that, I think the councilmen and the developers in the neighborhood are all doing what they're supposed to be doing. They're working hard at trying to resolve the situation. It seems like you guys are really close to resolving that, and I believe in the councilman. I served with him on the council. He's a good guy, and he'll stick to his word and work with the developer and the neighborhood. But I think from a planning perspective, you know, you have a trade-off. Sometimes you have to give a little bit to get a little bit. And I think, I know exactly where this is. One of my good friends lives right down the road, and I visit there often. And it's a great neighborhood, and I think that this particular development could lead to some really good energy for the neighborhood. I wish, I live in Creve Hall, I always say that every meeting too. I wish that we had some more of these neighborhood-type developments. So I think that it, for me, it meets the policy, and for the reasons that it fixes a dangerous parking situation, it creates more walkable neighborhood, and that, under your current rights as what you can build there, I think that this is a reasonable development. Now, I hope that the councilman, and I know that he will, will work with the neighborhoods to get the right compromise, and figure out what the size of that commercial building should be. But I'm going to vote to support it and urge the neighborhood to work with the developer and the councilman to get that right size. And I know that you will do it. But from a planning perspective, I think that it's a good development. I'm going to support it.
Thank you, Greg. Jared?
Yes, I too agree with Greg on this. I think this is a good development. It supports a couple of items that I support, and near and dear to my heart, that being, those being, number one, a walkable community, and adding sidewalks, but also infill development, which I am a big proponent of. But as Greg has identified and articulated, I do believe that there are some discussions that remain that need to take place in order to address a few specific issues that were brought about by some of the neighbors here. And again, Councilman Holloman will do a great job representing his community and ensure that he continues to bring both sides to the table, and try to the best of his abilities to find a meaningful solution that will hopefully benefit all individuals in this area. So I too am in support of this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
As the developer of the group, I usually support development. In this particular case, I'm not sure I can. Greg, a couple questions for you. Under the current zoning, either under the 2,300 square feet that they would rebuild, or the 3,000 square feet of the existing building, can they do a restaurant use there, given the parking on site?
Given the current layout of parking, no, they wouldn't be able to use, they wouldn't be able to use it for the full-service restaurant. Under the UZO, a takeout restaurant is exempt from parking requirements. So they could do a takeout restaurant, but not the full-service restaurant that they propose in tenant space B.
And as a matter of what this body can impose, can we impose conditions on the square footage of the intended restaurant, or the number of seats in the intended restaurant, given that there are only 19 total parking spaces?
Yes, I mean, that's a proposal of the SP. Yes, the commission could recommend limits on those square footages.
Yeah, I would be in favor of a deferral until Councilman Holloman can work out the balance of the 4,900-square-foot commercial building. Having done mixed-use development, the discipline and the balance between parking and use is critical. And with only 4,900 square feet, I'm not sure you have that financial flexibility. You're going to take what's going to pay you the most rent. And in my particular opinion, I think the neighborhood would suffer. So I would recommend a deferral until the neighborhood and the councilperson can work out a compromise with the developer.
Is there a motion?
That's just my opinion.
Okay, all right. Jim?
Yeah, I'm concerned about the parking, the size of the restaurant. I like the development, and I'm in favor of it. I do think that if there's a deferral, I'm okay with that. But I think the councilman will probably work these items out to see that there's sufficient parking.
Thank you. Councilman?
The three residences, will they still fit into the 7.5 zoning class?
They'll fit into the bulk standards of the seven, their size, their proposed size within the SP is permitted under the current RS 7.5 zoning district, even though the lots themselves would be, you know, about half that size.
Okay, so the bulk standards are appropriate for the current zoning?
That's right.
Okay. My, in listening to the folks that came... My, in, in listening to the folks that came and looking at the petition that we've got, my primary concern at this point is that it seems that a smaller restaurant was being presented in the earlier days, coming to the point we are, and just recently, there seems to have been a change, if I'm hearing everything right and reading, for a bigger I, I think this is a good thing for this area, and as it's presented, it looks like it fits well into this area. And I have total confidence in Councilman Holloman's ability to, to shepherd this going forward here and work. But given the, the conflict that you've just raised over what they legally could do as far as parking is concerned, I'm tending to think that a, a deferral of at least one meeting and give these folks time to talk about that and see if, you know, this space, this 3,000-foot could be subdivided into maybe three spaces or of smaller. So listening to what everybody said, I would make a motion that we defer one meeting and give the, the folks time to work on this a little bit more and come back to us.
All right, there is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
On the deferral, I think I'll be more specific. I think the, it's not the three houses, it's the size of the restaurant.
Right.
That needs to be worked out, that, like the commission.
It's the size of the restaurant in correlation to the size of the overall commercial building.
I understand.
They theoretically could reduce the size of the commercial building and come up with more parking.
But our concern, or my concern, is the commercial restaurant and not the residential end of it.
Correct.
There's a reason that I would, would be voting for a deferral.
Correct.
And I, and I would amend my motion to include the commercial aspect of the development as the concern that we want addressed.
Okay, is there a second? I'm comfortable with that. Okay.
Are we in discussion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Any other question on the motion?
Is it okay if I ask the developer a question while we're discussing the motion on the commercial piece?
Would you come forward to the microphone, please?
What, just, in terms of making the project happen on the commercial space, why did you choose to go to that size of commercial space?
The entire space or just the restaurant?
Both.
Both. It was a process that we went through with planning and the architects. I'm not sure I understand why this, because...
Why not create a smaller space, I guess?
Partially economics.
Okay, so some of it is economics.
And also, when we first met with the neighborhood in November, December, there was some frustration exhibited by some folks about larger homes on smaller lots. So we decided to do three homes with the 50-foot-wide lots, consistent with historical aspects of Sylvan Park, and also to make the aesthetics of the block continue. Otherwise, the two homes would face 46th, and then there would need to be, most likely, alley access between the large home there and the other two. And there was resistance to that concept. And so this fits in terms of the residential aspects being oriented towards Utah, and then the remainder being commercial with existing alley access to parking as opposed to opening up a new alley. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I would also just say that when we first went to the property, it was with Claire Minnealy, who's a local baker. She needed retail space, and so we were hoping to provide that for her, but she didn't need the entire space. So we tried to accommodate her as well as put a restaurant in, which is what the neighbor had told us they would like to see.
Any other thing?
Just follow up on that. I mean, so is it, is it within the realm of your consideration that you could have more than two businesses in this space?
I honestly can't answer. Our pro formas have all been on the basis of this SP that was finalized a few months ago, so, in terms of the economics.
But if you can't have the kind of parking that is necessary for the kind of restaurant that you have, then you don't have a plan.
Could I, could I make a clarification? And maybe, if I don't understand, you know, if I'm not understanding this discussion, let me know, but I just want to clarify that the current proposal does meet the parking requirements. A restaurant could go into that 3,200-square-foot space and meet the zoning code requirements for parking. Now, as to Mr. Haynes's question about could a restaurant use go into the current building, the answer to that would be no, and that's based on the parking configuration that's there right now, and I'll go back to the, the ground shot, the photo. There are five spaces, five parking spaces right now in front of this existing building, and those are the only spaces right now that would be permitted to go along with a business in that existing building. The, I think there are about 11 other spaces on the residential lot to the north. Those would not be allowed, those could not be counted as parking for that use, and that's why a restaurant couldn't go into the existing building. But a restaurant could, by the parking standards of the zoning code, go into the proposed building because it, parking, all the required parking is provided with the onsite parking and with the proposed on-street parking.
But I will also say, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm by no means an expert in codes or zoning, but behind the existing building today is a shed that's in very rough shape. If that was torn down, there's plenty of room to put the requisite number of parking spaces to allow for a full-service restaurant. It's just not currently used today as a parking lot, but it's asphalt and it would be open. So in that case, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would qualify for a full-service restaurant.
I think the codes department would need to see a, a layout of that parking lot to be sure of that, that might be possible.
We did have discussions along those lines, just to understand what we could do by right. And there wasn't old, there were two sheds. One, the cellar torn down is a condition of the sale, and there's an existing one now that is in, like I said, very difficult shape. So as you can see, the structures behind the existing restaurant would be torn down, and it's partially paved already. Our architects did a CAD layout, and there would be plenty of parking, is my understanding, for existing full-service restaurant.
And did, did you look at a, an adaptive reuse of the existing 3,000-square-foot building?
I'm not an engineer and architect, but it is in rough shape. Unfortunately, the prior owner was living out of county, and not much upkeep was done on the property. However, we could explore that. It was an option that we had on the table. It is today, well, the tenant's no longer there, but it was functioning, so.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question for the applicant? Thank you very much. Further discussion? Everybody ready for the vote? We have a motion to defer on 1A and 1B until our meeting on May the 23rd. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, it's passed. We will, we'll defer these two items until our meeting on May the 23rd. Next item is item number four, and, 5:30. Just so everybody will know, we're going to lose our quorum at 5:30, so we will go ahead with the presentation for item number four. Gregg, you're going to do this?
This is item number four, commissioners, the Salem Town Cottage's SP. It's a, it's a request for, for zone change from R6 to a residential SP. The site is in north, in the north Nashville community, south of the Rosa Parks Boulevard and the Interstate 65 interchange. Can you get a hold of me to wait? Okay. The staff recommendation is approval with conditions. Again, the current zoning is R6, which permits single-family and duplex development. The current lot layout, and you can see it's, it's currently divided up into, into individual lots, the current lot layout would permit up to 18 units, including eight duplexes. There are two land use policies within this SP boundary. T4 mixed-use corridor is the policy along Rosa Parks Boulevard, and T4 neighborhood maintenance is the policy for the three lots facing 7th Avenue North. Mixed-use corridor is a, is a, is of course a mixed-use policy, permits residential and commercial development, and neighborhood maintenance is a residential-only policy with the intent of maintaining the character of the existing neighborhood. Here's the proposed site plan. There are 24 dwellings within the SP. The only vehicular access to the site is from the existing alley connection to Buchanan Street. 17 of the dwellings will be on the west side of the alley. Seven additional dwellings will be on the east side, fronting, on the lots, fronting onto 7th Avenue. The required parking for this SP will be provided along the alley and along the Buchanan and 7th Avenue street frontages. The applicant also proposes a combination of a masonry wall and a wood fence along Rosa Parks Boulevard to provide some noise and visual screening. There are several courtyards included in the design to provide some open space with the development for dwellings that don't have street frontage. The applicant also submitted building elevations to show the intent for the character of building design along street frontages and courtyards. To close, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. The proposal is consistent with the two policies, the mixed-use corridor and the neighborhood maintenance policies, and the SP has also been designed to fit within the existing context of the surrounding neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Gregg. The applicant has 10 minutes to present his request. Any additional information you want to add? And you may, again, reserve two minutes if you desire for rebuttal.
Yes, sir. I'm Michael Kenner. Good evening, commissioners.
Give your address also, please.
Oh, I live at 4605 Indiana. I live in a neighborhood that's very similar to this. It's a very up-and-coming neighborhood. We, we worked very closely with Councilman Gilmore on this project. We went through several community meetings. We negotiated with the community to give them something that TDOT wouldn't give them when they initially cut the interstate through, which is a kind of noise buffering wall system to allow for some of the noise from the interstate to be buffered. And one of the things that we tried to do was to create a cottage community that has a lot of the same common elements that you've seen in some of the other proposed cottage communities in Nashville. These communities have a very communal aspect, and we tried to mimic some of the street frontage that was fluent on 7th Avenue and on Buchanan to not have any large gaps or anything like that. We had overwhelming community support for most of the meetings that we went to. There was tremendous amount of negotiation to give the neighborhood and the councilwoman exactly what she wanted, and I think there should be a letter from the councilwoman in front of you in full support of the project with stipulations that we have agreed upon. I think that this is the type of density that is wanted and needed within the urban core of Nashville, and I think that this is the kind of project that brings more walkability to Nashville. This project sits currently, I think, 10 minutes' walk from the State Capitol, five-minute walk from Farmer's Market. It's about a five-minute walk from Worthy, depending on how fast you walk. And I think that this project is something that, that is needed in the neighborhood and something that would be a great asset to the neighborhood. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, anybody else that would like to add comments in favor of the proposal? In favor of the proposal? Anybody that would like to comment against the proposal? Please come to the microphone, and you will have two minutes. Please state your name and address, please, before beginning.
Okay, yes, my name is Georgia Harris. I live at 700 Buchanan Street. It's the same dense that we've seen in here. It's going to be about the parking. It's going to be about the noise, the dogs, the drainage to the existing properties that go downhill. The density is too much, too little space. These are not full lots that we're talking about, and the building layout is great, but it's not enough land to accommodate the colleges. There is an alley, no other street outlet, a dead-end alley. It's a hazard. There is only one way in, one way out. There's an, there will be an overflow of parking in front of my house, and the others in the dead end, and, you know, the dead end on Buchanan, and it's a dead end on Buchanan, and it's a dead end on Rosa Parks. If it was a gated community, could these 24 colleges and the 1.5, I say, two vehicles per person, could it, could, could the parking be up in that dead end? It's, it's really a hazard. There has been too much of a loss of greenery in the community. We're by the interstate. To give us a noise wall, something that we wanted years ago, is really a slap in the face. My thing is, we do not need to do this. That portion of land that is there, it needs to be conserved for greenery, not just pack something up in there, because, again, I will say, it is a dead end. There is not another streetway. So one way in, one way out. You come down the alley, turn the corner, you're in the dead end. So we do not have, it's, it's just too dense. We don't have enough space. We don't have a roadway. So that's the reason I oppose it. And then also, let me give my last 16 seconds. We have had misleading cards. It says, um, a zone change for SP for the Salem Town Colleges at Rosa Parks in Hume. It is Rosa Park and Buchanan Street. We've had numerous cards. Get your geographical things and get them right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next?
How you doing? My name is Ronald Peoples. My concern is the...
Your address, Mr. Peoples.
I live at 708 Buchanan, and my mom lives at 1803. I grew up there all my life, been there all my life. The neighborhood, I'm with the growth of the neighborhood, but I'm, I am concerned about the parking. I'm concerned about, on 7th Avenue, the parking, it's already packed. They, you know, we got buildings going up. It's real packed, and we were misled on all the meetings. No one was there at the meetings to discuss this, and they kind of just slapped it in. And so, you know, I just approve it. It was like seven houses there, you know, years ago. So 24, you know, would be a lot for a small area. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing no one, do I have a motion? Oh, you want to use your two minutes? I'm sorry.
Michael Kenner, again. One of the things that we have looked at was the parking. I think under current SP regulation, we're supposed to hit 1.5, and we managed to carve out enough parking to satisfy that. But the other thing that we've looked at is the demographic that's buying these housing, and it's the millennials, the, the younger generation, and 35% of that demographic doesn't even own a, a car or have a license. Most of those people choose to bike or walk to work or take mass transit, which hopefully we will have available soon within that corridor. So the demographic shift is, is one of the things that we've looked at for being able to have a little bit less parking in these neighborhoods. I think some of the other concerns with water and everything, I mean, these, these plans, as you, I'm sure you know, are thoroughly vetted by our Metro Water Department and by our Stormwater Retention Department, so I'd just like to address all their concerns. Thank you.
And we thank you very much.
Move to close public hearing.
There is a motion to close the public hearing and second it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the public hearing is closed. So let's begin our discussion with Jeff.
No comment.
Derek?
Very quickly, basically, if I read this correctly, Gregg, currently, they have the ability to build up to 18 units, and the proposal now is for 24 units, a difference of about six units overall.
That's right.
Okay. That's what I need to know, just make sure I was certain on that. Thank you.
Gregg?
Thank you for amendment.
Okay. Uh, councilman? Jim?
Make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
We have a motion, and we have a second to approve. Staff recommendations, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And it is approved. That concludes our items of business for today.
Well, items of here.
Yeah, well, business, all right. Let's go into the remaining... All right, let's go into the remaining items. First one is a report from the Historic Zoning Commission. I don't have anybody for that. Okay. Parks and Rec. I will note that we had a fabulous report on Friends of Two Rivers Mansion. Councilman Claiborne and Phil Howard, who is the president of the Friends Group, gave a great report. We did not really have any motions because we flack the quorum, very honestly. First time this happened since I've been going there. But anyway, we will take that up. Any business at the next meeting, which will be the first Tuesday at noon in June, and it will be at the Fort Nagley Vista Center this time. So we're making some visits at different places. Next is the executive committee report.
Just a couple of comments. Y'all all need to get your electioneering materials together because next meeting will be the election of officers. So, and we have, just in terms of Nashville next, Amy Lou presented the last speech in this series. We're in the process of transitioning to a much more, a broader-based visioning process. We'll have a number of new ideas as we go, I mean, a number of events over the next two weeks. In fact, over the next two weeks, we'll be participating in 13 events, where we'll be doing, visioning our book of planner. Jennifer hadn't added up those 13 spaces, but we've got 13 in the next two weeks, including Casa Alpharan, Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Association, the Neighborhood Association, Nashville Women's Breakfast Club, Madison Chamber, Lachlan Springs Neighborhood Association, My City Academy, McKissick Middle School, Career Exploration Day, Nash Vitality, Festival of Nations, the FBMM Entertainment Business Management Meeting, Frederick &amp; Clark Realty, and Nashville Black Chamber of Commerce Meeting. So we'll be at those over the next two weeks. So that's kind of what we're focusing on right now.
And that's your executive director report also?
That's it.
Is it all combined into one?
All, that's it.
Wonderful. Okay. Legislative update. Counselman?
We're getting ready to start the budget hearings next week. Non-legislatively, put your calendars for May the 19th and come to Two Rivers Mansion and see the mansion in its restored state. 2:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon. Come and go.
Excellent. Any further business to come before the commission today? If not, a motion is in order?
So we are adjourned.
We are adjourned.